Okay, is everybody ready?
Are you the sole discretion on whether or not?
Um. Okay, thanks for coming tonight, everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge.
White House, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in the world.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Paul, any additions or corrections?
Uh, nope, looks good.
I have none.
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 I have none.
Okay, anything? Uh, I'm just gonna do one thing. Our fire chief has to go to a different meeting, so we're gonna move G1, the fire pension discussion, up to right after the consent agenda. Move that up to the top. Other than that, that's all I've got for changes. I entertain a motion to approve as changed.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, the consent agenda, any questions for administration on the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah, the liability waiver form here, um, is this what we use for just kinda like an umbrella insurance policy?
See, yeah, typically during each year, the league requests that we approve this or don't approve it based on the policy that we have with the city. And historically, the city has chosen to not waive those monetary limits on municipal tort liability.
We do not waive, okay. So which one of those three is this? Cause it shows three options on here.
Yeah, so it's the one that's in dark there. The member does not waive the monetary limits on the.
Oh, it's checked, okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry, when I looked at this before, I don't think it was checked, so.
Oh, no problem.
All right, I'm good.
Okay. All right, thanks, Paul. Anything else? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we move G1 up next, so fire pension discussion, that is in your packet under G1. Fire chief is here if you have any questions on that. This is what we've talked about in the past. Uh, evaluation was done. I know Tim and Chief Fitch had a conversation, and this is kinda where we landed as far as the increase to the pension. Uh, still leaves a twenty-three and a half percent buffer, um, so it's overfunded by twenty-three and a half percent according to the calculations there. So, just getting council's feedback and would need approval on that. Any questions for the chief or administrator?
I mean, it is a big increase, but, um, we haven't had an increase for several years, and after we did the analysis of the financial performance, we felt like this was appropriate, and I know that, uh, and in my report, I noted that we'll be looking at this each June, starting in June of each year going forward, and then trying to bring a recommendation one way or the other, uh, based on market performance in the early fall, starting next year.
Thanks, Tim. Anything else? Okay, with that, I entertain a motion to approve the increase to the fire pension to thirty-two hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Thanks, Tim. On to, we have a visitor from Dodge County Local Housing Trust Fund tonight, so.
Hi, Karina Schmitz from Min Prairie, actually, and on behalf of Dodge County Housing Trust Fund. And we would like to move forward with purchasing the city-owned lot at eight oh five Third Street Southwest. Um, we plan to, with the Housing Trust Fund, gift it to First Homes. They'll keep it in a land trust. To their, their plan is to put three, um, paired townhomes on there. Um, one set focusing on veterans, one set focusing on workforce housing, and one set focusing on general affordable housing. And keeping it in the land trust will keep it affordable. Um, more so, uh, they'll go after some grant funding from the state next year, um, to cover kind of affordability gap and, and build, and then plan to have them done by early 2026, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You've got those exhibits in your packet there. I know we've discussed this, uh, previously. I know if there's any questions for, for Karina or for, for staff. I know, um, Ian, you put the purchase agreement there, and I know the city attorney did take a look at that, and she had a few comments, and we'll incorporate those into our, our agreement, and we're looking at a petition of waiver that'd be signed at the same time to handle those other assessments, so.
Okay?
And then, secondly, to ask for the city, Cassin, to contribute towards the comprehensive housing study. It needs to be done. The last one was done in 2019. Um, every five years, um, it's recommended to have one, and for any affordable housing to get completed or for any grants. When they go to Minnesota Housing, um, they need the comprehensive housing study. Maxfield put together an estimate for us, twenty-five thousand dollars. The Housing Trust Fund will contribute fifteen thousand. Um, I submitted and got approved for a grant from Compiere for five thousand, and Dodge County, um, put in twenty-five hundred. So we are at twenty-five hundred shortfall, and the projects that we're doing, um, are really focusing on Cassin, so it would benefit Cassin.
Okay.
We'll handle that first item.
Yeah, let's, let's do the, the purchase agreement first, then we'll come to the housing study. So are there any questions on the purchase agreement for the project we've discussed before with the townhomes?
No.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve that.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and thanks for that. Um, on to the housing study. Um, where will we get that in the budget?
Well, I do think the EDA, if you take a look at the, the budget to performance to date, um, M7, I think the EDA does have some capacity from our, some loan funds we haven't utilized this year, so that could be funded through the EDA's, um, line item there. And I think Ian and I both agree that there is some value. The last time it was done was, was over five years ago, so with the changes mostly in the eastern half of the county, but we, we know that that might be a positive. So I think we would, and Ian, you could speak to it too. I'm not trying to speak for you, but I think we recommend to move forward with that if we can.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I hear from interested developers all the time, where is our housing study, and oh, the one you have isn't up to date enough, so it's definitely.
You have a timeline for that project?
Yeah, if we let Maxfield know by the end of this year, they'll still honor the, um, April estimate is when he gave it to us, and they'll complete it. He was gonna get it done by about summer next year, summer to early fall.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Mel. Thanks, Dan. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Travel safe, anyone?
We'll have documents for you, so we can get those routed through, okay?
Thanks.
Okay, on to public forum, which is not the public hearing, so I don't have any cards for that. Um, so we'll move on to Agenda E for the public hearings. So the first up is gonna be the Southwest Cassin Reconstruction, so I'll open the public hearing for that project, portion of the project, and we'll start with the feasibility report and presentation from the city engineer. So the floor is yours, Brandon.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, first item, uh, business as mayor mentioned, is Southwest Reconstruction. Uh, just a note, uh, for the council, the feasibility report that we did discuss and approve last council meeting, um, one change, uh, Mayor Johnson, or excuse me, Councilman Johnson, mentioned, um, or asked us to consider adding the, uh, four townhouses off of Fourth Street and Third Avenue as part of the project. Um, staff reviewed that. We thought it was good to, um, add them in there and ultimately notice them of that hearing tonight, um, and then council can make a decision if they wanna include them in the project or not. The, the reason behind that was, um, they ultimately have their water and sewer service as part of this project. That's the street that they live on, that's their address, um, so we thought it was prudent for us to consider them, uh, for the assessment project. So like I said, staff made that change and notified them, so we've kinda lumped them into any other, any other property. Um, and that's kinda been the past practice with townhouses, including them, um, in the assessment. So that's just a note, um, on the feasibility report. Ian's got pulled open there, uh, presentations, planning on doing a presentation, talking about the project, talk about what's done, um, previously, and then, uh, ultimately, consideration of resolution after the public comments, uh, for the council to order, uh, the improvement. So, um, highest level mainly probably for the council and the people in the crowd, this is the first of two hearings. This is the first hearing about the project, um, hearing on the improvements, which is the project. The hearings to thumb up or thumbs down the project. We're only in preliminary stage. We haven't completed final design. After we have final design, we go out for bids, assuming we move forward tonight. We'll have the hearing on the assessments, which is setting the amount to be assessed. We'll talk about some amounts tonight, but this is not setting that amount to be assessed. This is, do we wanna continue down this path of doing a project and considering special assessments? Any questions on that before I just jump right in from the council? All right, well then, go ahead, Ian. Um, quick outline, uh, let's talk about the project area, look at the project that we're considering. Um, and then this is again, first of two public hearings, this is gonna what we call Southwest Reconstruction, the downtown project. Um, and Eighth Avenue will come as a whole separate. We'll do this all over again for that project, so. Um, talk about the project area, um, background, what we completed up to this date, um, talk about the proposed construction, assessment process, uh, schedule, cost, of course, public comments through the public, uh, hearing portion of the project, and I will let everybody know if you haven't grabbed, um, a notice, um, in the back lectern there. Um, and you're gonna also receive one in the mail. We are having an open house next Tuesday, uh, six to eight o'clock right here at City Hall to start talking more about the project, assuming we're moving forward from a council, um, level. Uh, so that's outlined tonight. Uh, this is the project area. Um, we are calling it Southwest Cassin Reconstruction. It's an area bounded by Veterans Memorial Parkway on the north, uh, Old Highway fourteen, uh, Highway fifty-seven, Manorville Avenue on the east side of the project, Highway fourteen, um, on the south side of the project, and Lions Park or Maston Creek along the west side of the project, um, ultimately Second Avenue Southwest, First Avenue Southwest, uh, Third Avenue Southwest, and Fourth Street Southwest, Fifth Street Southwest, and Sixth Street Southwest. Um, I will call your attention to the colors there. Uh, we do have different REUs. That's been the city's, um, past practice, uh, through their special assessment policy, um, assessing the purple properties, which are traditional residential properties, one REU, um, and then we have dabbled in, in this case, um, Plaza fifty-seven there, shown in brown. Uh, we currently have that as eight residential units, uh, so they're gonna be paying eight times as much as a single-family house shown in purple. Uh, similarly, we have some green. Uh, we have our parkland where Maston Creek comes in the northern part of the project there. That's a city of Cassin parcel. Uh, they're treated just like any other parcels, so we're looking at assessing them at two REU, and then the three properties in the southwest, um, Sixth Street there, the two apartments, and there's a vacant apartment lot there. Um, those are also two REUs. Um, and then the Mount Lion Church, um, kinda behind Subway there, that's two REUs, and then we have the Casey's property. It's being proposed as six REUs. Uh, the council's gonna ultimately, assuming we're moving forward during final assessment time, decide on those REUs as would be proposed by staff and preliminary reviewed by the city council, um, but open for discussion as we move forward. Um, I will come back to this map to kinda zoom into some properties, um, and Ian will kinda walk around. We'll zoom into those properties. You can see them a little bit better, but that is, um, what we're looking at, um, for the limits of the project and what we have proposed for REUs. Ian, uh, a quick background there. So feasibility report was presented to the city council last council meeting, October twenty-third, uh, for Southwest Reconstruction. Uh, what are some of the high-level, um, things we talked about there? Existing streets within the project area in fair-to-poor condition. Sanitary sewer and water mains have exceeded their useful life expectancy. This is one of the most problematic, uh, neighborhoods with respect to sanitary sewer maintaining that. We have some shallow, flat sewer. Uh, storm sewers inadequate for rainfall events. There's a minimum amount of storm sewers, a lot of concrete valley gutters that nobody likes to drive across. Um, doesn't drain real well, um, so it's inadequate, uh, for our current design events. Um, sidewalks, there's minimal on sidewalks. Uh, looking at it, um, could be a discussion if the citizens want more sidewalk, um, but essentially, there's only generally sidewalk along the west side of Second Avenue from Veterans Memorial to the south extent of the project. Um, so that's what we currently have proposed in the project with the idea that we're perpetuating a, a sidewalk along the north-south kinda center of the project. Um, and then the Casey's block is Casey's was developed. They added sidewalk on that city block there. Uh, so that's what's existing. Uh, proposed construction, this is what I call a full reconstruction. Um, we are starting over, um, starting at the roadway, replacing entire roadway. Place sanitary sewer, manholes, uh, sanitary sewer services to the property line. Um, in the city of Cassin, it is the property owners' maintenance and responsibility and ownership for the sanitary sewer from the main to the property line, looking at replacing them. Uh, replacement of the water mains and services, similarly, similarly to sanitary sewer services, the water main is ultimately a property owner, property owner responsibility in the right-of-way. And then reconstruction of the storm sewer that's inadequate capacity, so we're looking at designing that to a ten-year event. That is the frequency or probability that would happen one every ten years, ten percent that happens in that year. Um, similar like a hundred-year event happens one percent of the time every hundred years statistically. Uh, we may have exceeded a hundred years in the last couple of years, but including two thousand and nineteen. Um, but that's, that's what we typically design our storm sewers from. Um, construction, a permanent stormwater basement on the west end of Fifth Street. Um, there's some city-owned land kinda behind some houses off the west end of Fifth Street, looking at, uh, some stormwater basement there just to help control some of our flooding. Um, so it would come out of the stormwater fund. Uh, construction of subdrain and subdrain services, that's been a new standard that we, generally newer standard that we've implemented in the city, uh, standing, installing a sand base underneath the roadway, and then a subdrain behind the back of the curb, and then stubbed out to each property owner, so the sump pumps can drain into those, um, lines, and that goes into our storm sewer. Um, that's been standard, um, in the city for some time, but generally newer, um, relative to the age of the neighborhood. Um, so that's included as part of the project, and the replacement of the sidewalk and pedestrian ramps to make them ADA required. Uh, through Department of Justice, uh, it's an ADA requirement, so we'd make those compliant. Um, and then we noted that there's no sidewalk replacement on the Casey's block that was generally replaced here in the last five to ten years in pretty good shape, so. Um, that's what we have, uh, from the feasibility report laid out, um, the preliminary, uh, scope of work, again, we're just, uh, tonight considering, um, our feasibility report moving forward and the final design, hence why we wanna have the, the, uh, open meeting next, uh, Tuesday. Um, so next slide there, talks about the assessment process. Um, you've all been notified because the city is considering, um, instituting State Statute four twenty-nine, which is a special assessment, uh, statute. Um, it's required to notify you, notified in the paper. Um, we're required to have this hearing tonight, uh, because ultimately, the council decided there was a need for a project. Uh, we had the engineering study was performed in the form of feasibility report. So we called the hearing on improvements tonight to gather public input. Council will consider input and decide whether or not proceed with the assessments or the project in general. Uh, we could proceed with the project without assessment, uh, assessments also, and then council will consider tonight to order improvements. That'll be the next resolution after we close the public hearing, and I will note that is four-fifths majority to, um, have that resolution passed. With that, um, that's kinda where we're at, where we've done to date. Assuming we're moving forward, um, we will continue on our final design, meet with the property owners, get the best project we can get, uh, talk about, uh, where everything is, how things are gonna lay out from a sewer and water perspective, and how we're gonna get to our homes during construction. Uh, we will publicly bid that project, and then we'll have a final assessment hearing. Again, that's set by State Statute four twenty-nine, and that is going to be the key meeting. That is where the final assessment amount will be determined, um, at that meeting. Um, and there will be another resolution for the council to consider after another public hearing. Um, that is ultimately set by State Statute four twenty-nine, and then also laid out in our city's assessment policy, so we're following what we've done on previous projects, including, uh, Highway fifty-seven and like Third, Fourth, and Fifth Project from two thousand and seventeen. Uh, schedule, um, ultimately, um, we've had the hearing on improvements tonight, uh, considering ordering improvements tonight, and then a final assessment hearing. Um, we have started some preliminary design, uh, looking at having that, uh, tentatively, winter twenty, twenty-five, maybe February, March timeline to get a bid back, um, and then get, uh, ultimately calling, uh, that final assessment hearing, uh, this winter. Again, that's when the final assessment amounts will be set. You will be notified. It will be in the newspaper, and then begin construction potentially in spring of twenty-five, and then complete in fall of twenty-five. So, it's gonna be a pretty big project, so we're looking at a full construction season, so we gotta get going right away in the spring, um, to get it done by fall. Uh, some costs tonight, uh, total project about five point seven million. Uh, mentioned REU is a residential equivalent unit. Uh, there's eighty-nine by adding those other four parcels on, um, so ultimately divide, uh, that amongst eighty-nine residential equivalent unit. Uh, how we assess, again, set by the city's assessment policy, is thirty percent of the total roadway cost, so that's about four hundred and eighty-six thousand. That would be assessed back to the property owners that are benefiting from the project. I just put that in perspective, that's about fifteen percent of the projects being proposed to be assessed to the benefiting residential properties. The other eighty-five will be borne by the city as a whole through our taxes, sewer and water rates, et cetera. Um, so what does that work out for typical assessment per one REU? If you can back up, Ian, there. So about ninety-five hundred dollars for one REU. Uh, you can see as that grows as we take it two, six, and eight times. Again, two is the green, the brown is the, sorry, brown is the eight, and six is the, um, blue color for Casey's there. Um, this is preliminary numbers. Uh, final assessment amounts will be determined, uh, after the project, project's bid. It's an engineer, I've created a report, did some real rough cost estimating, but by the time we get down on the design, no exact quantities, get it out for bid, then we'll know better, um, what this number would look like, and then the council have a decision to make at that time. Put that in perspective, uh, twenty-twenty-two for the trunk Highway fifty-seven project, the unique project that was a min dot, um, project that was an eight point seven, I'm sorry, eight thousand, seven hundred dollar residential equivalent unit assessment for the properties that were benefiting there. Two thousand and seventeen, the Third, Fourth, and Fifth Project was a little over seven thousand per residential equivalent unit. So I looked at, uh, the increase we've seen in, uh, inflation and the timeline that fits about, uh, a residential equivalent unit cost we've assessed in the past, so. So I always put that out for perspective for the council to consider that, um, how that's worked on past projects, so. Um, moving on to, I'll zoom in the map, or Ian will zoom in the map here. Um, this area here showing Second Avenue Southwest, south of Veterans Memorial. Uh, you see Maston Creek flowing through there. Again, the green is two residential equivalent units. All the purple residential units are considered one. Uh, I mean, you see on the right or the next slide, Ian, um, that brown area there, that's Plaza fifty-seven. We have currently got that scheduled for eight REUs, so they'd be paying eight times as much as a single-family, um, residential. As we keep moving around to the south, um, there's a business there that has a service there, uh, that'd be one. That's off Fourth Street. Continuing, that's Fourth Street and Fifth Street from Manorville Avenue is on the right, are the east-hand side of the sheet. And on the west, there's Second Avenue, all single-family residential minus the Casey's site. That's proposed to be six residential equivalent units. And as we move farther to the west of Casey's, um, Fourth Street and Fifth Street and Third Avenue and Second Avenue there, all single-family residential REUs, one. And then going farther south, this is the, in green is the three apartment parcels there, um, they're REUs of two, and then everything else there in purple would obviously be one, is single-family residential. Then lastly, moving east over to the off-ramps, the Highway fifty-seven, uh, Subway's kinda the parcel that's not highlighted there, um, having single-family residential kind of around it, and then, uh, the church would be, um, two REUs there. So that's what's, um, was presented in the report and how the cost breakdown that we discussed. Again, preliminary cost, um, if we move forward, it'll be final design, be back at the final assessment hearing, assuming everything moves forward, so. Um, with that, um, there's a public hearing for public comments, um, so may I pause there, Mayor, and answer any council questions you may have, and then we, as a public hearing, so answer any comments from the citizens.
Any questions for Brandon right off the bat, before we open the public conference?
Yeah, the, um, the sidewalks, um, basically, you're extending what Casey started along Fourth and Fifth all the way west?
No, uh, we'd be coming down, um, so Second Avenue, which comes out, uh, by the brewery there, of Veterans Memorial, their sidewalk, generally the entire length running north to south.
Yep, I see that.
We'd be replacing that sidewalk as part of the project in pretty rough shape. I think there's maybe a house or two that doesn't have it. So the idea there is to, let's create a corridor. If we're gonna put some in, let's make a nice corridor so people use it, cause they will not use it. Um, and then the, the Casey's block, um, I believe we were planning to only replace, Ian, that's on slide, uh, thirteen there, only replace the, uh, sidewalk that Casey's put in as part of their commercial development when they redeveloped that neighborhood. I know you may be going with this about considering, um, sidewalk on Fourth Street to connect Casey's to the west that's shown on the map, or is Second Avenue something we can look at considering? I don't think we currently have that in an estimate now. Uh, furthermore, sidewalk is not specially assessed, uh, so it won't necessarily change the cost to the citizens directly via cost we deserve as a project.
Side along Chapco then, or what are you thinking?
Yeah, it could go probably on the north side or the south side. We could look at that and see what would make best sense, probably on the south side, cause you can see the Casey's has the residential, um, property on the northeast side. It doesn't have sidewalks. We on the sidewalk. I'd have to look at the constructability, adding sidewalk to non-sidewalk neighborhoods can be kinda problematic from a grading perspective, but.
Yeah.
We definitely can look at it. To the point of if we're gonna make the investment in sidewalk, let's have some connectivity, connectivity to our sidewalks out on Highway fifty-seven. Um, furthermore, we're gonna talk about the trail, um, south of Highway fourteen and having a trail corridor to connect the south side of our town too, which would connect to this, to have some continuity for our citizens even south of fourteen to have a nice pedestrian connection all the way to Lions Park, so.
Yeah, just, um, running that Second Avenue all the way down, but then there being no, um, east-west connection over either Casey's or the Plaza fifty-seven, seems like kinda a missed opportunity if we're gonna be rebuilding, but, um, and then, another question, the dead-end streets, are those just gonna be left kinda the way they are? Are they gonna be cul-de-sac?
Uh, well, we got a couple of dead-end streets, and Ian, if you wanna jump to slide, I'll start at the end of, uh, slide fifteen there. Um, that is parkland to the west of that or to the west of the apartments. We are looking at putting a cul-de-sac in there just for snow removal. Um, so we're looking at putting a cul-de-sac there. We're probably unable, um, to the, uh, that's Third Street there between the apartment and the residential units. Um, probably not able to put a cul-de-sac in there, so that'll probably likely be perpetuated as I kinda see it now as a dead end.
Okay.
Um, which is not ideal, right? Uh, we'd like to put cul-de-sacs in. Um, and then the other one on Second Avenue there between the Ortiz property, um, and the Ripley property, which is still on that slide or shown there, Ian, on that slide. Um, there's, that old road there only serves the Ortiz property. Uh, we'd probably, um, extend curb and gutter and then reconstruct it in the form of a driveway, um, and then leave it as public right of way, but it'd be a, basically a longer driveway, um, as Second Avenue, um, on that dead end. I think those were all the dead ends as part of the project.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Did you do a hammerhead on any of those, or no? Is it just not upstairs?
Yeah, we could.
This one's probably pretty tight, but the other one there between the apartment and the house might, might have.
That'd be the only opportunity I think we'd have.
Yeah.
Uh, the only one to be considered. We can look at where the right of way is, so.
What's a hammerhead?
Like a three-point turn.
Oh, okay. Just gives you some more room to, to turn around. Obviously, that road's not going anywhere else, so it'd be nice maybe to do something there that makes it like, hey, this was intentional to be a turnaround here. But if we can't, we can't.
Yeah, we look at that, prevent snow storage, just we don't plow that last driveway. And I'll talk to Charlie about it, uh, Paul Legre, its director, about it, about, um, how he plows that, and if there's an opportunity to provide something there for sure.
And then, um, you said the west side of, the west end of Sixth Street there was gonna cul-de-sac, cause this, this is all parkland over to the west?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, cause you don't show anything west of.
Yep.
End of that road there, so, okay. All right, that's what I've got for now.
Okay, anybody who would like to come up and share with councils, come up to the podium and just make sure you state your name, address, and give us your feedback? Hey, anybody? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing then for this portion of the project, the Southwest Cassin Reconstruction, um, and take up the question. The question of the council tonight is, do we wanna move forward with the project or not? So that's, that's the big question, is do we wanna order the project based on the engineering we've seen, the issues we've had in the past? Um, personal opinion, I mean, if you talk to public works, this is an area that, back in two thousand and nineteen, it was one of our worst-hit areas for the, the infrastructure under the ground is, let's just say, less than stellar shape, and probably should have been replaced a long time ago, so, um, anybody else have anything they wanna share on that?
I think the, uh, the flood mitigation efforts as part of this project would also be very beneficial to that area as well.
Ryan, anything?
No.
Oh, anything else?
Nope.
Dan, anything? Okay. All right, with that, we do have to, we'll call for a, a vote on the resolution to order the improvement. That'll give Brandon the go-ahead to continue with the final engineering, get out to bid, and follow the timeline he was talking about. Um, we will do this as a roll call, cause we have to have four-fifths majority for it to pass. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. Um, and then, Paul, yes or no? Yes. Dan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
No? And I'm yes, so. Five-zero on that. Okay, and thank you, thanks, Brandon. Thanks for all the effort and that. Um, and thanks to the citizens for your patience. It's not a pleasant process. Uh, with that, we'll move to number two, two thousand and twenty-five street and utility improvements for the next section, and Brandon, you're up again.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go through the same thing, uh, for the two thousand and twenty-five street utility improvements. Um, I will again mention, if anybody decides to leave that was part of the Southwest reconstruct at the podium, grab a notice. It's a letter from the city administrator about our meeting here, um, Tuesday at six to eight o'clock, open house, meet with myself and other engineers regarding the project. Yes, it's gonna be open house, come as you will. Um, you'll also get a notice in the mail, and it's been posted on social media as well. It's on the city's website, so. Um, just wanted to let you know if you decide to leave, so, um, again, very similarly, uh, council, we'll go through the other, um, project that we have tonight, the two thousand and twenty-five street utility improvement. Little different, uh, type of project, um, little different, uh, schedules, so we'll talk about them. So I'll just jump right into the feasibility report here, um, excuse me, uh, feasibility reports in your council packet, um, jump into the presentation. Uh, outline again, talk about project area, background, proposed construction, assessment process, the schedule, the cost, the public comments that we'll have as a public hearing at the end of this. Again, this is the first of two assessment hearings. The first one's on the improvements, the second will be setting the amount, uh, assuming we move forward. Um, and again, I'll note the open house will include this project also on next Tuesday at the same time. Um, project map here, um, probably pretty tough to see, but we have two schedules. Um, the one at the bottom of the sheet is Schedule A. That is, uh, Second and Third Avenue from Main Street to the railroad tracks. Street to the railroad tracks, kind of between the Legion area there and the downtown businesses, that's been an area that's been patched up many times at Public Works, I've been heard it called Lake Cassin before, because it doesn't drain, so we're looking at ultimately solving that as part of this project. And then secondly, Schedule B, we're calling it, which is Eighth Street Northeast, from Eighth Avenue, also called the Dump Road, or, yeah, I'm sorry, Northwest, Eighth Street Northwest, excuse me, from Eighth Avenue Northwest over to 12th Avenue Northwest, and that's shown on the upper left-hand side of the sheet there. And again, we'll zoom into those areas once we kind of go through it, that is the project that we're calling the 2025 street utility improvements. Quick background, very similarly, we approved a separate feasibility report for this project at the last council meeting, existing streets in both areas in fair-to-poor condition, the water main in Schedule A, again, more of that downtown area, Second and Third Avenue, is in good condition, there's no storms during Schedule A, so we're looking at adding stormwater drains to ultimately get that area to drain, so we don't have Lake Cassin anymore. Water on asphalt's bad, water on asphalt ultimately deteriorates asphalt pretty quickly, so that's why we've been in there patching, so we're looking at improving the drainage there. Sanitary, I'm sorry, Schedule B there, water main, it's been very problematic, this is Public Works and the Water Department's number-one priority for water main improvements, it's in very poor condition, it's duct lined, we got some hot soils in there, so it's essentially eaten through the pipe, so that's really one of the drivers of the project, in addition to the street being in fair-to-poor condition. The sanitary sewer, Public Works reported, it's in pretty good condition, so we're not looking at making any changes there. There's some storm sewers present in Schedule B, so we're not looking at making any improvements there. So that's the background that we discussed in the feasibility report. So I'll jump again back to Schedule A, feasibility report recommended the following, reclaim and pave, that's where we grind up the pavement and repave it, future roadway, so it would be curb-to-curb, we'd replace that, replace deteriorated section of the curb and gutter, there's some curb and gutter that's in pretty tough shape in there, but it ultimately hasn't settled out too much, this has been kind of some poor drainage. And then we'd adjust gate valves and storm sewer and whatnot as needed, and we'd install some storm sewer catch basins and some storm sewer to ultimately make everything drain due to our storm sewer system up in Main Street. And then repair some of the sidewalk as needed to maintain a safe walkway, and then also that railroad crossing there, probably approaching the road about how to make that crossing better, because it's not currently ADA compliant, and then replace any pedestrian ramps out on Lake Main Street to be ADA compliant as required by the ADA laws the Department of Justice has. Schedule B, again, that's Eighth Avenue Northwest, or Eighth Street, excuse me, Northwest. Feasibility report recommended the following, replace the roadway surface, replace sections of curb and gutter that were in poor shape, or that we're gonna have to replace some with the water main replacement, and replace the water main with an eight-inch PVC water line, that's the new kind of standard water lines that we use, or water mains. And then one little tweak in the report, we were looking at tying in the services underneath the street, and talking to Public Works, they're ultimately asking us to replace the water services to the property line in the curb stops. Concern there is we, if we were to tie in underneath the street, you gotta have an extra connection in there, we've had, this can be problematic with leaking and whatnot, and we don't want to tear up a new road, so we have included that in the project's scope, but that water line cost would be incurred by the Water Department and not part of the assessment for the services themselves. Very similarly, like we talked about, special assessments ultimately dictated by State Statute 429 in the city's special assessment policy, determines need for a project, which we did, and we did the engineering study, considered it last council meeting. We're here tonight to hold a hearing on improvements, to gather public input on the project, to thumbs up, thumbs down on the project, moving forward assessments. Council, you will consider input and decide whether to proceed or not, and then we'll have a similar resolution that we just passed on the other project. So when we move forward, publicly bid the project after we get final design, we've done some preliminary design, looking at wrapping that up this winter, and then we'll have a final assessment as heard after we get the public bids back, so all the numbers tonight we're talking about are preliminary. Engineers put together a report, we haven't done final design, things come up, we put some buffer there, maybe we'll use it, maybe we won't, maybe bids will be nice, it's gone both ways on us the last couple of years, with respect to project going up and down, but then we'll rerun the final assessment amounts at the final assessment hearing, and then you as a council will have to make a decision on moving forward with final assessments and setting that amount at that meeting, and then the project is constructed. Schedule, two first items we're here tonight to talk about, and that is the hearing on the improvements, and then potentially ordering the hearing, or, excuse me, ordering the improvements. Final assessment hearing, looking at more like springtime, we're gonna have a big push on our side to get the southwest project up, it's a lot bigger, so we're gonna have to need a full construction season, so we may have the hearings at the same time, don't know yet, but we'll just see how that goes. That'll be springtime, again, you as a citizen that's affected are proposing a special assessment required by law to notify you, so we will notify you again, we will put it in the paper again as required by State Statute 429, and then we're looking at spring and fall construction. So that's the proposed schedule. Proposed cost, Schedule A, again, a lot smaller project compared to what we consider with the southwest project, total estimated project cost, $162,000. This portion of the project, we're proposing to assess as assessable front footage, and that's laid out in your city's special assessment guide, that we can do that, we'd like to do that during commercial properties, try to make it equitable per commercial properties, and that's what we have with the Schedule A, which is Second and Third Avenue. So we are looking at, per the city's assessment policy, assessing that 30% of the total city cost, which ends up being about $37,000, which is about 23% of the project, the reason it's a little bit higher, we have more road costs as opposed to utility costs associated with that project, so I'll put that in perspective, it's 23% of the cost that would be incurred by the benefiting property owners, the residual 77% would be borne by the city as a whole. So typical assessment amount is about $63.14 per foot, corner lots are assessed at 100% of the front footage and 50% of the side footage, which is laid out again in your city's special assessment policy. Schedule B cost, and we'll get to the maps and look at some assessment rolls in a bit here, that one's a little bit more, $775,000. We went, since seeing that area was all residential units, we went with residential equivalent units there, again, tried more equitable, a house is a house, and everybody's using the street, so let's make it one residential equivalent unit. Again, 30% of the total roadway cost, about $148,000, which is 19% of the project, reason why that's less, we have more street, excuse me, more utility work than we do street work as part of that project, so that's slightly less there. Typical assessment there, $2,300 for a half RU, those are the corner lots that's out on the Dump Road and 12th, Eighth and 12th. The thought there, past practice from the council as well, when the project comes through the other side of the road, they'll get assessed the other half when that happens. So $2,300 for the half REUs and $4,600 for the full REUs. I'm jumping around a little bit, I'm back to Schedule A here, Ian, on the next slide, go to the next map, slide 12, there you go. Maps are pretty tough to see here, but we have ultimately footage showing on the map there, again, if it's a front footage, 100%, 50% on the side foot, so you can see the area in red there, which is from Main Street, essentially to the railroad tracks, assessing some properties there, and maybe go to the next one to make more sense of it. So we have different, this is the preliminary assessment roll, so this is the roll, we calculated all that, and we have some different footages as part of that assessment roll showing the footages. So the assessment range anywhere from 1,390 dollars up to $7,600 for the 11 parcels affected by Schedule A, which ends up being that $37,000. Moving forward to Schedule B, again, Eighth Street Northwest from Eighth Avenue over to 12th Avenue, we have 30 properties there, again, the ones on the west that abut are that side yards 12th Avenue and side yards Eighth Avenue are half REUs, the remainder are one REUs, so those proposed assessments are going to be $2,300 and $4,600. If you want to go to the next slide that has the roll, for those 32 residential equivalent units, for a total of $48,000 assessed. So I'll maybe pause there, Mayor, and see if there's any comments from the council, and then obviously, public hearing again for any comments from the public.
Before we open up the floor?
On the schedule for the second, for Eighth Avenue, for Eighth Street, sorry, Eighth Avenue, it's, we have the final assessment hearing in the spring and begin construction in the spring, is that pretty feasible, we can?
Yeah, we'll see how it goes, we may do them at the same time, we'll probably have separate contracts, just because the other one's pretty, that's gonna take a full construction season, I don't want to make it too big. The other thing is, we are gonna be likely adding on to this project, the paving behind the Legion if that moves forward, and then also some trail projects, we may lump into this project, so I still gotta consider how it's all gonna roll out. But yes, at the end of the day, we've been working on plans and we're gonna get it ready to go by spring, so I just don't know those dates exactly, and I don't want to, I didn't want to put a date out there if we don't know the date, but I will set that date sooner than later, because I'll have to go to council, what to send notices, so then we'll be sending notices and making that, making that notice on social media and whatnot, that we have the final assessment hearing, so all of our citizens can know, so I just don't quite have those dates set yet, so.
Anybody else before we hear from the public?
Yeah, the Lake Cassin issue, you're not proposing to change any of the curbing, it looks like, right? But you're gonna add catch basins? Do those catch basins get connected to something, or how's that gonna work?
Yeah, so Ian, if you want to jump to slide 12 there, we're not, we're not planning on replacing all the curb and gutter, as it runs north-south on Third Avenue and Second Avenue. It generally drains from Main Street to the south to the railroad tracks, there's a little bit of a low spot there, north of the railroad tracks and the south end, so we're looking at adding catch basins there, and then running storm sewer to the east and the north up to Main Street, so we would be adding some curb and gutter, there's existing curb and gutter, so we'd be having to add some there as we put the pipe in underneath, it's gonna fall in our hole, right? And we're gonna have new structures there. But going to the north, we'll look at that curb and gutter and evaluate it, if we're gonna replace it or not, including sidewalk if it's deficient, but we don't have a full reconstruction plan for Third Avenue and Second Avenue, so it's gonna be a full reconstruction of the pavement and the spot replacement of the curb.
Yeah, so basically, the spot where the water's collecting, we're gonna dig a hole and then run a pipe up to our storm water on Main?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Anything else for Brandon? We'll open up to the floor, if you'd like to come share your opinion and state your name and address, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion from council, I mean, obviously, two project areas, again, that it's hard to deny that it needs to be fixed, and all the water main breaks we've had and that, so with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordering the project and continuing the process, and it can be finished up after we get bids back and council decides next year to move forward, so I'll entertain that motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
Thanks, Paul. Again, it's a roll call, so Paul, yes or no? Ian? Ryan?
Yes.
No?
And I'm a yes, so it's five, there you go.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks, Brandon, for putting all that work in, communicating with everybody, everybody, stay tuned, next Tuesday's in our meeting, you'll keep hearing more information on it, and we'll move forward and get everything fixed up, so. And thanks for coming out tonight. Grab the notice as you. And if there's a notice on the way out, if you decide you don't want to stay for the rest of the exciting meeting, just grab that notice and drive safe on your way home tonight, so thank you for coming out. Yes?
I have a question. Fighting with Bud Hawkins, and my brother Richard and I just acquired my mother's house, she passed away in August, 1404 North Manorville Avenue, out by the high school, and we received a large utility bill from the city, and my brother talked to Jessica, I think, he filed a, I don't know, if it was a protest or questioning it, and they said tonight it would be heard in front of the council for approval to, it was, it was like a $700 sewer and water bill, and there's no one there. So.
We didn't have that in the consent.
I'll check on that. Well, I'm out of town, I don't know all your procedures, and I didn't see it on the agenda.
Yeah, we didn't have it in here to talk about, so I didn't know anything about it.
Oh, okay, she said that it would be heard by the council.
She might not have got it in the. Do you want to leave your name and phone number or contact, so I can have somebody to get ahold of you?
Sure, sure. Yeah, because I'm from Colorado.
Oh, first I heard of it, so I have no answer for you. So, yeah, if you just leave your name and contact, and we can get it to Linda here, and then we can get back to you on that. Thank you very much.
All right, real quick. Go ahead, I'll.
Okay, you or I, we'll keep, yeah. All right, so we're gonna go on to committee reports, we're gonna go to F1, the final plat for the Creekside Grove. That'd be Ian?
Yep, that's me. All right, so council previously approved the preliminary plat for this one, so this here, I've gotten the screen, just the final plat exhibit, so you'll note that it's just slightly different from that preliminary version, namely here on this east side, just one large outlot instead of a couple of smaller ones, and that outlot A would be the same as it was in the preliminary version. So just with these two different outlots, this sets the property owner, Schuett Enterprises, to sell off each half for development in the future. There is a proposed one for outlot A, which will be seeing next month in December, and any future development of either outlot would require plating before development happens. So with this one, we're not recommending any conditions of approval. So, yeah, if there's any questions from the council on this one?
Any questions for Ian?
What's our, we talked about this at planning, I don't remember, the east half of the lot, they're not zoned yet, but what is our guidance on zoning in these, is it residential on the west side?
So the east side is a combination of residential and commercial, commercial, of course, being closer to the Highway 57, and then the west side, outlot A, is residential.
Okay, so that's kind of what we're expecting is gonna happen, is B is gonna be commercial, maybe is multifamily allowed there?
Um, in outlot B, there's a portion that's single-family and other portions that are right now guided towards a higher-density residential. It's just such a large, large piece, there's kind of a lot of things going on there.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
But it's open to it, if somebody's proposed that they could.
Yeah.
Get your permission to do it.
But most likely, A is gonna end up being residential, and then B is, depends on what comes along.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else got a question for Ian on that one? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution, approving the final plat for Creekside Grove.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries. Thanks, Ian, appreciate it.
You're up still, I think.
That's right. And this next one is the preliminary plat of Etchison Glen, which is a small portion kind of by Veterans Memorial Park and across from the Dodge County Fairgrounds off of Highway 57. So these are two different parcels, they're not currently platted right now, but the applicant requested to change the location of a lot line, and per the city's ordinances for subdivision, it requires plating in order to do that. So just a simple, two lots, but the one lot, Lot 1, would be slightly larger due to the change in the lot line. So this Lot 2, this larger one on the south side, does have a current residence, there's nothing on Lot 1 right now, and actually, at the public hearing that was held earlier this month, Mr. Etchison, the property owner, stated that he didn't have any immediate plans for development of that parcel. There were similar questions at the public hearing regarding access, since it doesn't have any direct frontage along Highway 57, but I did verify that there is a recorded access agreement allowing for access of that parcel going forward. Let's see, and with this preliminary plat version, there's no conditions of approval, but I do have a couple that were proposed for the final plat, which I can talk about those later on. Okay, if there's any questions about the preliminary plat, I could take those.
Was the north or south the one that had the house? I'm sorry.
The south one has a house on it.
And would the north still be residential only?
That's right. And it's the R1 zoning, so it could have like a single-family home or like a duplex.
That was one of the questions, a residential.
Yeah, yep.
But there's an access issue, right?
Well, there is an access agreement, and there's.
So there's agreement in place, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been recorded.
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's all I had on that.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Ian on the preliminary plat?
No, do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, okay. Do you have a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the?
Can I, can I?
Oh, yep.
Let me just, so you mentioned the conditions.
For the final plat.
I know, but I want to talk about it here before it gets moved on, I guess. Item two with the charges, I guess I'm confused, water availability charge, sewer availability charge, and stormwater charge. This parcel's already being served by all of these, and there's already two parcels there, and that's not changing, so why? And the parkland dedication, why are they having to pay fees? I realize that's the process when we take a big chunk of land and divide it into, you know, thirty chunks of land, but this is two parcels, he could literally build on the existing parcel and have a second house there, and then do this process, and none of the utilities or anything would change, right? Like, I guess I just don't understand, to me seems like we're using the subdivision process only because it's the only process we have to move a lot line, and it's really not designed for this kind of thing.
But there is no water or sewer to the second lot.
Right, but I believe that in this case, that we're not gonna give them water or sewer to the second lot, they'll just tag onto the existing lots. So from our utilities perspective, we don't have to do anything different than what they currently have. Is that incorrect in any way, my understanding?
Weren't we having, don't they have to?
Yeah, the other condition has to do with accessing utilities, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So lots two is gonna have an agreement that they're gonna piggyback on lot ones, or I have a record. Lot one is on top, lot one is gonna piggyback on lot two's connections already to utilities.
Yep, that's what we're proposing.
So why should they have to pay availability fees if they're not gonna actually be connecting in, they're connecting to an existing line that's already private? And that's presuming something ever gets built, 'cause right now, nothing's getting built, but. To me, to me, all these charges don't seem to really apply to this condition, and I would personally think we just waive them, but.
Brandon says he may have an answer.
Yeah, if you would like mayor. Yeah, so why do we have whack and sack, which is water availability and sewer availability, which if it's a new subdivision through a cornfield, makes sense, right? We're gonna add a hundred houses, we're gonna use up a hundred houses of our incremental storage of our water towers, we're gonna put up another one here of our wastewater treatment plant, so we have to grow those, right? So we don't, we want development to pay for development, so when we add those connections at use, there's stuff outside of just the private service that they're using capacity of, again, water towers, trunk lines, our lift station, et cetera. So this lot is not currently served by water and sewer the way we understand it. So the question, I understand that's a little bit gray, it's not a cornfield, I fully understand that, and if it was served, we probably would not be serving that whack and sack. But the idea is that they have not paid their fair share of their whack and sack for this lot, 'cause it's not currently developed, it's not currently served. So in the spirit of having the whack and sack for development, that that would be a development when they connect in, regardless if they have a cross used to provide the connection, it's the additional water that we're gonna have in our water tower for that house, same thing with our treatment facilities, to have that treatment. Now, there's somebody good discussion about, we like collect those at the time of plating, and it's a little unconventional, 'cause we have a lot, I get that, the idea, but the idea of that it's not paid in yet, and it should, because like, cornfield's not paid in yet, and those houses in that cornfield haven't paid in yet, so that was the premise that we're going off, and we like collect them at the time of plating in a traditional sense, right? So that's my perspective of why the whack and sack would be appropriate.
Okay, so.
Now, the nuances of if we collect that when, and then I think could be a debate at least from the council.
Okay, that sounds fine on water and sewer, what about storm water, 'cause nothing changes whether or not it's developed or not stormwater-wise, and what about parkland dedication, because?
Sorry, interrupt.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, I'm asking you questions, so.
Yeah, fair enough. So from the storm water, you're right, that's a single-family residential, that is not necessarily triggering our storm water pond design that we would see on a large subdivision. But the reason why we have that storm water charge is, again, for our storm water construction, maintenance of ponds, along with our storm water fee that we all pay as, you know, citizens, so. Lot one is probably even a little more gray than the water.
Yeah, 'cause this resident presumably paid one and a half 'cause of the size of the lot, when we did the Mantlev reconstructed already.
Good question, I had not heard that.
And again, maybe I'm just nitpicking, 'cause maybe these insignificant fees, I don't know what they are, but, and then what about parkland, do you have comment on that?
Parkland, again, is, if it's adding a residential user to our parks, then that's why we have a parkland dedication fee for every residential unit, that we're gonna have to build more parks, right? Whether that's a dedication through the plating, if you're gonna plat a park within your cornfield, right, that you're gonna develop.
Okay.
Or you're gonna pay a fee to use the existing park facility, so that's how our code is written for a traditional development.
Right, so if this lot line wasn't moved fifty feet or whatever this is, and you just built a house there, none of these fees would ever have been paid?
Well, I think there would be discussion of the law is not currently served, yes, it says to pay whack and sack when it's platted, and it's unplatted, I understand your point of it not being adjusted, but they have not paid their fair, like any other residential development would pay if they're gonna hook onto our system and be applying that whack and sack. So I think that'd be the discussion on the other side of your coin, right, of not going through this process?
Mm-hmm.
So I think that is the discussion, right?
Okay.
Of maybe applying it, if this wasn't completed, well then, well, no, we don't let them hook up, 'cause they haven't paid whack and sack like every other property has that has been recently developed or added onto our water and sewer system.
Okay. Do we, how significant is the fees?
Um, each of, each of the whack, sack, and storm are two thousand per acre each. And this.
And that's about one acre?
Yeah. Little, little more than one acre.
It's being charged on lot one size?
Just lot one for those, those three that I mentioned.
Okay, and the dedication fee?
Parkland dedication, the way it's written in the condition is that it would be deferred. If there's future subdivisions, so.
Yeah, how do we determine, is that based upon?
Well, they would do another, like, plat.
Right, but the parkland dedication fee is just a flat fee per dwelling?
No, it's per acre.
Also per acre, but.
I think Paul's asking for acre, like what the parkland dedication fee is.
Oh, oh.
So it's ten percent of, in this case, I think it's eleven thousand dollars an acre, so it'd be eleven hundred dollars an acre.
Yeah, it's eleven hundred per acre.
So divide it out by whatever, that's how it works, we don't do it by like each house, we do it by acre of development.
Is that only an R1? 'Cause like Vail's got a lot of dwellings for how many acres it got, right? So I'm just curious on how we do that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that was the policy of the council.
'Cause parkland should be based upon people, not on acreage, I would think, but.
There might be a conversation outside of this purvey, but.
Yeah, we're kinda getting off.
How it's been done in the past is it's by acreage of how we do it, so either it's a certain amount of land that's dedicated towards the, you know, for parks, or many developers choose to just pay it cash in lieu of for that parkland dedication, that's based on the cost per acre and a percentage of that, so that's been the policy. So I'm open to discussing that more, but it's, that is the current status quo.
Okay. Anyways, this is all subject to the final plat anyway, right?
Right, until the final plat doesn't come in there. Good points. Anything else on the preliminary plat? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Echason Glen.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, now the final plat for Echason Glen.
Okay. I'll just bring up the exhibit here, so we can all see. But yeah, very similar to the preliminary plat. And then just the two conditions of approval on this one, we've discussed them, but if there's any questions about the two conditions that are being proposed or anything else with this final plat, we could have more discussion.
Any questions for you on the final plat? Paul, anything else?
I guess, I don't know, I don't feel like this is.
I think I know where you're coming from.
The way this works, and I get what Brandon's saying, but for what we're doing, I'm just not sure that our normal process is fair, but. So I don't know, I don't know if that's something we can just be like, hey, look into it, think about it, is there something we can do? Maybe, maybe he doesn't care, maybe he's just like, whatever, it'll be somebody else's problem in thirty years when they build a house, I don't know, but. This might not be the only time we'll come across this in town.
I mean, I guess that would be a question I would have, is so what is the catalyst, then, if we're not gonna do it at plating? You know, 'cause it's a small parcel, I totally understand, and I get what you're coming from, but like, for example, if I wanted to bring a two-acre parcel in, you know, and I didn't pay for my whack and sack when I brought it in and platted it, what would be the catalyst for me to recoup those whack and sack fees? You know, you're saying upon further subdivision of it, is that what you're thinking, or?
I, I have not thought about, I have not thought about this enough to really grasp it, so I'm just, this all makes sense when you're taking farmland and turning it into a subdivision. When we're taking two parcels and just rearranging their size, it just doesn't seem like the formula we use should be the same, but maybe, maybe it does, so.
Is there a way to apply the same formula, but yet delay the payment of it until they actually do the development?
Well, that's what's, that's being proposed, is that it gets delayed.
Looking at deferring some of the costs.
At least six thousand dollars, you said two thousand per acre, so, so there's, yeah, six thousand dollars of fees that'll be sitting there when this property gets sold and built, presumably, if it ever does, but I imagine if it's getting rearranged in size at some point, it'll be sold.
Well, and I would assume the cost would be cheaper now than, let's say, ten years down the road, the whack and sack and that all can change, 'cause the cost of the property is gonna change. The value of the acreage could change, so then it could be more, so it could be beneficial now.
Yeah, and I'm just, the fact that it's also like an acreage-based thing also seems kinda weird in this respect, too. Again, it makes sense when you're doing subdivision, and they're basically trying to fit as many houses as they can, so.
It's just kinda one of those things that, because of the scale of it.
Yeah.
So, micro, the policy is for, designed for bringing in twenty acres and sixty homes, which makes perfect sense.
We're calling this a subdivision, but nothing is actually being subdivided, right? This is just our process in order to get something platted, that's my understanding.
There's nothing else in our ordinances or.
That we have for policies to be able to do it, and that's kind of a.
I would just, maybe, don't mind mayor.
Yeah.
Just note, common acres on the east side of town there that has pretty large lots, they paid a per acre fee, so they paid a surcharge of not having dense development, so it's also an incentive to develop in a more dense sense also.
Is that something we want? So this may be a conversation for another time, but maybe we should look into how we assess these fees, or maybe if, is there any reason we can maybe reduce some of these fees for this particular, or cases like this, not necessarily this one uniquely, but.
No, we could take a look at infill development, if that's something you like, Paul, it's certainly something we can do some research on.
Yeah.
I know that there's the four-acre parcel just south of St. John's, that church has looked in the past at potentially developing, they've chosen not to, but I mean, that would be another situation where it's infill development, probably, you know, it's four acres, it's not a huge parcel, so, you know, if you don't mind, maybe Ian, you could do some research and see what other cities do about smaller infill development, and that's something we can bring back at a future meeting for sure.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Anything else on, Mel?
Well, I just, I have one question, what, what brought all this up in your mind?
Well, we've called this multiple times a subdivision, and it's like, it's not really a subdivision, there's already two parcels that are just changing size, and then that's triggering fees that, if these parcels weren't changed at all, they would never have paid these fees, as far as I understand.
One little caveat, the other parcel north is not currently served by water and sewer, I would agree with you, if they were served by water and sewer, and it was truly a lot line adjustment, which you can make an argument, they're making a lot, they're not asking for sewer.
Right, but couldn't they have made a private agreement with the owner of block two to hook into their water without involving the city at all?
They have separate, separate water.
It has to have a separate service.
Or at least an agreement, and we'd have a meter there, so they have to be able to billing permit and all that jazz.
Otherwise, you could have like Eighth Street, one person can get the water serviced, and everybody else builds, and just tees off of theirs and goes down inside of it, and you have one server, that's not gonna.
It's been done, I mean, we've run it a long time.
Well, we ran into it third, fourth, fifth when they were digging stuff up, but it's not supposed to be that way. They did it in the fifties, apparently.
Yeah. It is a clunky process for a small lot like this, so I agree with that, and I think we can do some research.
It feels weird, we can make it better, it feels weird to me.
Yep.
Okay.
So you'll look into that, bring it back to the future for stuff?
Okay. Any more questions on this final plat for the Echason Glen final plat?
Nope.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you Ryan, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thanks Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you very much, everybody. On the new business, the election results, we have resolution certifying election results, that is in the packet. You can see what those results are. So for the city, we had mayor and two council seats, neither were, none of those were contested, any questions on that, I mean, the numbers are there.
I would like my name spelled correctly, someone spelled it wrong in the write-in, I was very upset by that.
Somebody wrote you in, you're already on?
No.
You can't spell your name?
Yeah. I'm glad you wrote this open.
He wrote me in and spelled my name on it.
Okay.
The first time I was my mom, I'm like, wait a minute.
Maybe it's not you.
Maybe there's another Ryan Christian.
Maybe it's not you.
Okay, all right.
Get your note here, sir, if you wanna bring that up.
Sorry.
You're good. So congratulations to those elected. Your job will not get any easier. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to certify the results of the election from Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you. Number two, the request for proposal from David Drowne for compensation study, this came up in our last negotiation cycle, where we agreed to, or committed to doing a compensation study. So you have that information for the next negotiation cycle to base that on, I think the last one we did was two thousand seventeen. So by the time we have negotiations in the next two to three years, that'll be almost ten years since that one, so it'll give you a good base information to help with those negotiations. There's a sample copy of the report in there, Tim, anything else on that?
Well, I appreciate Linda, she worked up a good RFP, and we did go out, I think we had three that we contacted, that were three interested parties, and after she went through it with them, for a period of time, the one that came out that really was the best, most workable one for us was David Drowne. And Linda, you could speak to that, but I mean, there was one firm that we talked to, Ida Bailey, which they were interested initially, but then they said, well, your entity is smaller than we typically work with, so we ended up going with the firm that we have used in the past, David Drowne did our previous study, and we think it's gonna be cost-effective to utilize their services.
Okay. Any questions for Linda or Tim on that?
Yeah, what's ongoing maintenance on the study?
It's keeping up with the rates, so in six months, if we want them to go and look out and see if anybody's changed, or maybe we want them to, next year, do, see what the coal is for all these other rates, how it affected these, that's the ongoing maintenance.
So that's not like an option that we can choose if we want?
Yeah, to be honest with you, my recommendation would be to go with number two there, which is market analysis and calibration only, you know, simply because it is so expensive. I mean, at some point, you might just do another market study, I mean, you might, you know, if you're gonna spend six thousand a year one, and eight thousand a year two and three, you might as well have just done another market study. Might cost you a little bit more, but it seems like, for us, we typically do them every five years, so that seems like it would be more cost-effective for us just to do that number two option, so we wouldn't have the six thousand, or the eight, one, year two and three, I guess that was kinda where my perspective on it was.
Okay, absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve option number two.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you very much, administrator's report, Tim?
Okay, let's see here, a couple of things I'll go through here, and then I got a lot of informational stuff in there, too, so. A lot of the stuff I have in the packet is related to the electric department, so, you know, I include this so you see it, just so you know that a lot of things are coming down the pike with our resource accreditation, so there's also electric forecast that's included there, I'm not gonna run through that, you can read it yourself, but if you ever have any questions about that, I'm certainly glad to try and answer those or get information for you on that. We talked about the fire department pensions already, lead line inventory, that's something that went out to a large chunk of our customer base, and it's being done throughout the entire nation. You know, I know letters have gone out throughout Minnesota and other states, the federal government is requiring this inventory, and so we had a number of folks who filled out their information, they required, you know, they got a letter, they said, we don't know what your service is. They went and checked, those folks, we kinda were able to checkmark, some folks said, well, we don't know, and so those people were put as unknown, so they received a letter that said, you know, if you're unknown, we need to collab, you know, corroborate what kind of a line you have, it's part of the federal government's program. And there's that tracking tool I have a link to, it's very interesting, you can see every city in Minnesota, kind of an interesting thing, so. And we actually had relatively good feedback, I think we've had a lot of people calling in and say, here, we know our service line is X, we're noting that down, we're gonna update those files, and then apparently, from what the city engineer tells me, you know, each year, we'll basically send letters out again to folks we still don't know, and say, you know, we need to, we need to get in there and check it until we get everybody crossed off. It's mostly for folks with. It's mostly for, for folks with older houses, you know, for homes before like nineteen eighty are more likely to have an issue. I know there's some galvanites too with homes that are a little newer than that. But anyway, that's what that is, if, if you get residents that ask you about it, you know, we're certainly glad to talk to them or have them come in. We had a great visit with LMC folks. The, the executive director of the League Minnesota Cities was there. Councilor Egler and I attended that, that session, I thought it was productive and was good to hear what a lot of the other communities in our area are doing. I think that, you know, I had some good takeaway for possibly doing some employee in-service days or maybe like half days where we just kind of bring staff in and say, hey, you know, how do you think things are going? You know, and, and get feedback from them. That's something we might want to incorporate or take a look at incorporating as we go forward. Boards and committees, you know, there's some terms coming up if you know someone who's interested. Have them talk to Dan or to myself, you know, with him coming in as mayor, he'll be looking at appointments in the new year. So we're always glad to have those volunteers. We're so fortunate to have a lot of great volunteers that are willing to help out with our boards and committees. Planning and zoning, we've talked about a lot of that stuff. And then the Dodge County ambulance, you know, you're all cognizant that Mr. Gangler is going to be leaving at the end of, at the end of the year. He's going to be moving over to Mayo, working for their ambulance service. So there, and Councilor Ferris was able to attend the meeting, I wasn't able to since today. I don't know if you have any updates for the board or for the council?
Not really, I mean, there, there was an ongoing desire to continue to push the federal government to actually reimburse for their actual costs as opposed to just regarding it as a transportation service. There were some interesting ideas bounced around and there was definitely an interest in pushing the state to revise how things are paid as well, but that's about the sum total.
So yeah, so if I hear more things, I'll certainly try to stay on top of that and let the council know. Right now, we have a, you know, we've kind of set ourselves up hopefully for success next year, one way or the other. Anyway, couple of things in, in the packet there I did include. You've got the fee schedule, so that's something we're thinking about, our next council meeting, we'll have a draft. This is this year's fee schedule, just for you to review if you have any questions. Next meeting, we'll have a draft fee schedule, I'll be looking at finalizing that on the eighteenth of, of December, so.
So these red lines in here are active or are they part of the draft?
Are those ones active, Linda, or are they part of the draft?
Because I see.
They are part of the draft.
Okay, so those are.
There's changes that department heads have suggested already.
Yeah, as things start to populate, we'll put those, the newer versions, like, we didn't get that many changes yet, but as they populate, they'll become in red, so that's, that's something, good point, good question.
Is this easily accessible online for people within?
Yes, if you go to the city website, there's a fee schedule page.
We had some people, some Facebook trolls complaining about some fees.
Sure.
Be great to shoot this to them.
Yeah, no, I mean, we certainly, we have all this information online, we have the budgets online, we have the audits online. It's all available online and if somebody comes in, we're certainly glad to email it to them as well. So there's, we want to make sure that people are cognizant of what the situation is, so.
Yep.
No, good question there. So thinking of the fee schedule, that's something for the, for the, we'll have a draft to review on the eleventh for finalization. And then the last one I've got tonight is this animal rescue invoice. Had a resident call about that, I'm just looking for a little feedback. You see the report there and the invoice, the, the resident is concerned about the cost. We did reduce the cost of this invoice down from four hundred and seventy dollars to two hundred and fifty already. That's our base fee, our minimum. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to be able to offer the resident an option to place this on their assessment, basically like put on their taxes or to possibly offer them a fee repayment over the next year. So for example, like allowing them to pay it twenty dollars a month or something like that, if the council's open to that, that's kind of what I'm going to offer them. I don't expect to reduce that down further because the fire department did go out, they did do the work, they did rescue the animal. And that does have a cost, so I know some people say, well, it should just be free. Well, we have costs every time we have a call like that and in this case. So anyways, letting you know, just want to bring it to the flagpole if I, if you've got any feedback for me, that'd be great. If you're open to me, allowing me to put that on the taxes or allowing to do a, a payment replan. Basically, that's, those are the options I'm going to offer the resident.
Would you be putting the full amount on their taxes or the two, just the two fifty?
The two fifty would be, would be looking at, what was invoiced to them. That would allow them to pay it off in halves, basically they'd pay half with the first half and half with the second half.
I'm good with either option, whatever you were.
Yeah.
Give you the authority to work with them, but we can't waive it.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is a real cost, you know, for, for the department, so. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. I think that is all I've got, like I said, other than that, I've got a lot of items from the electric department and some things coming down the pike, as you will know, we'll have some, some updates at a later meeting with the electric department, so.
Okay, okay, so we're going to go on to personnel, one, one quick thing, I just wanted to go back and make sure that we are all clear that on the final plat for the Edgins and Glenn, that that was approved unanimously with the conditions that were on there, right? That we're going to look for future things for the thing, okay?
That's my understanding of it.
Just wanted to clarify that everybody was on the same page with that, okay? Thank you. Engineers, anything else, Brandon?
Nope, other than presumably we will not have a quorum at the open house on Tuesday. Y'all are not.
No, I won't be able to be here.
Off the practice. Concern that came up, so. On that, we're busy in design as construction's wrapping up, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Personnel committee, agenda item, so first one is wastewater agreement with Dave Wasson. So that agreement is in your packet for him to stay on as our Class A certified operator, yeah.
And we did have a good conversation with, with Dave, you know, we, we did let him know that we, we will be looking at it next summer, potentially opening that job up and seeing if it's possible for another Class A operator. We're starting to see a few more Class A operators get populated in the system as the state's requirements are, they're not, they're not getting to be less, but I think the state is being a little bit more realistic about the need for those Class A operators. So he's very aware of that and, you know, he knows if we give him notice, he has a certain amount of time. Same thing if he said, hey, I don't want to do this anymore, we would have to deal with it. But we do recommend right now approving that agreement to have him continue for another year. Any questions on that agreement?
I assume this is a lot cheaper than alternatives?
Yeah, I mean, I think having him obviously as a, as a contract employee saves us on healthcare. That's the biggest savings is healthcare, you know, you know, we, we pay some of those costs, but, but anyways, yeah, there's a cost savings to it, probably forty thousand dollars or so.
Yeah, because assuming he didn't want to do it, what are our options? Like, we would have to have.
Contract, but engineer firm?
Somebody from somewhere else come in and perform these matches?
To weigh in the sort of, no.
There's engineer firms that do have.
Well, I mean, in the short term, you know, Charlie Bradford, our, our public works director does have the Class A certification. So while we had that interim process last year when it was vacant, Charlie was there to certify the reports and make sure the plant was operating properly with his other duties, he doesn't really have the time to commit towards that as a full time. So the goal would be, you know, if, if Dave were to give us notice, we would say, okay, you know, Dave's got a month and then maybe Charlie can cover it for another month. And then we would try to have a full time person hired at some point in time. And if that wasn't possible, then we would looking for, once again, a contract operator, whether it would be people serve or somebody like, you know, somebody else who has a Class A license to sign off on those reports.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Question. Any other questions on that? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. On the number two probationary firefighter candidates for 2024. You have a letter from the fire chief proposing recommendations to add four new members to the cast and fire department as probationary members, Zachary Anderson, Emma Jensen Germanson, Crystal Heim and Zachary Weickert. So you have a letter from the chief, if there's no questions on that, I'll make the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Casper promotion to SRO, so Officer Casper has completed the necessary training, correct? And so that was kind of the plan all along, but he had to get that training done. So for a one year probationary period to serve as the position of SRO as recommended by the police chief. Any questions for the chief? Thanks, chief, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Attorney, any words of wisdom right? All right, perfect. Any questions on correspondence?
Just want to highlight that number five.
Number five, yeah.
Award there, appreciate their hard work, our engineering firm there, got to trumpet them a little bit. The other one that I've got included in there would be your, Sarah prepared that budget to date performance and then the, the finance report. So, you know, if you have any questions on that, we'll certainly be glad to answer this.